Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 16th at 7:00 PM. Could we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just on the Chairman's announcements, I just want to make mention of Douglas Town Hall is hosting. It opened up September 13th through October 25th. The Voices in Votes Museum, they have a program in the opening every, I'll just want to cut out some dates that are upcoming, September 22nd. They had September 25th and October 1st. These dates run all the way through until they close on October 25th. So definitely worthwhile to attend and check out the museum coming to town from Smithsonian. Next item, Citizens Forum. I don't think we have any topics on any of the Citizens Forum. Next up, instant motion to open up a public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion by Hal, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
So Oktoberfest Committee, one day alcohol license for the Oktoberfest and event discussion and possible votes. Tony, come join us.
Good morning, guys.
Evening.
That time of year again?
Yeah.
This is the 30th time that I do this. You have paperwork in front of you. We're asking for a one-day liquor license like we've had for the last 10 years. So we get that application in. One other question that I was going to ask you guys is, this Minneapolis Center parking lot, there's a lot of construction trucks out there. I'm not quite sure if they're going to be done by Oktoberfest, or if not, is it possible to relocate those and hide those somewhere for that day so that, so that we have more access?
If you can make one comment on that, anything that will slow them down will be a problem for us.
Yeah. That's a good big point.
Yeah, I'm hoping that-
It's been a painful process.
Yeah, I'm hoping that they get to the finish line before then would be ideal. But the Oktoberfest is for everybody at home, is Saturday, October 4th.
Correct.
Right? And the hours are still what, 8 o'clock to 4:30?
It's 8 to 4 officially, but the street closes from like 6 to 6 so that we can-
Yep.
-get it set up and take it down and clean up the mess and-
Okay.
Like it was never there.
Yeah.
Guys always do a good job with that. As regards to the liquor license, nothing's changed from the past 10 years when we forged that.
We run it exactly the same way. We've never really, we've never had any issues now, so we keep a good watch on it.
All right, any other discussion?
Just generally, I've watched a couple of your most recent meetings and it sounds like you've queued up for another great day. You've got as strong turnout as ever.
It takes quite a while. We're lucky to have another member joined our committee this year. You guys approved her a couple of weeks ago. She brings some experience, and if you noticed, she brings a lot of multimedia experience. So we've been blasted out there, so we're getting a lot of advertising and press this time, which can't hurt the cause.
Are you still looking for volunteers for October 4th?
Always.
For folks?
Always.
Okay.
Anybody that can volunteer even an hour or two, you know, help us out. You know, we've got lots of things to do that day, lots of things to run, lots of events happening. Anything's helpful.
Excellent.
Including all of you guys.
Yep.
Make a motion to close, oh, close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-nothing, perfect. Thank you, Tony, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All you do, keep us-
Kelly Mann is here to have a discussion as well.
Awesome.
Oh.
Chief, coming up.
Regarding October 4th.
Oh, okay.
Did I close that prematurely or something different?
Make sure you're opening out a fried dough this year.
Hey Kelly, thanks for joining us.
No problem. I just wanted to give a quick update on the steps we're taking from a public safety perspective in light of recent events. It's a great event that brings a lot of people to our downtown, and as the event has expanded, so has the need for comprehensive and evolving public safety planning. And I just want you guys to be very confident and to know some of the steps that we've taken to ensure public safety and security at this event. Obviously, our goal is to deliver the most coordinated and efficient response to any emergency that could arise at a large public gathering. I think it's no secret what's been going on at some of these gatherings and other places, and I think we'd be remiss to not think that, and not be prepared for something to potentially happen here, even in our small town. So earlier this month, I met with representatives from all our public safety departments, police, fire, highway, our public safety dispatchers, to review ways to further strengthen our safety presence in response for this year's event, incorporating some of the feedback that we got from the staff who worked in various roles last year, like the boots-on-the-ground staff following that meeting. I met with Mr. St. Pierre to share some of our expectations and also collaborate on ensuring safety and security throughout the event. So key areas that we focused on, including reviewing parking plans with the police chief, managing vendor access, establishing vendor, some vendor restrictions, ensuring proper inspection, and permitting of food vendors, and defining some emergency procedures such as if we had to rapidly evacuate Main Street. All of our public safety from Douglas and our mutually partners from surrounding communities will have a really strong presence at the event. Mr. St. Pierre has been excellent to work with and will continue to collaborate as the event gets closer. For those people who are watching at home on YouTube, or anybody who's visiting Douglas who might be attending the event, I encourage them to subscribe to Code Red, which is an emergency system that our town uses to provide notifications and alerts ranging from water main breaks to severe weather, to any type of emergency message that we might have to put out at a large public gathering. Signing up's really easy. You can just go to douglas-ma.gov and it's right on the front page there. You'll see the Code Red logo. You can click on it and sign up. It's free. You can also do it from the link on the Fire Department's Facebook page. I put some instructions up there this afternoon. Similarly, I encourage all of our citizens, residents, visitors to check out the Public Safety Facebook pages as well. The Fire Department has an Instagram page, and we sometimes put out emergency alerts and other notifications on those pages. We're also on X or Twitter, whatever we're calling it these days. So that's about it. I just wanted to provide that quick update, and we really look forward to seeing everybody out there. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Any questions for me?
Well, you're here just more of a comment. We're right not to be flippant about this issue, and it's particularly important these days. I think just generally, everyone does a wonderful job of doing that securely, but doing it in a way where it doesn't feel like it's a fortress, which is a tricky thing to crack. And I think you've hit that well. And I'm sure there's things going on behind the scenes that we need not be concerned about, that it's being done though. So kudos to you, your team, and, you know, everyone involved.
I appreciate it. On behalf of the police and fire chief, yeah, we've been, it's in the background, we're there, we got you guys covered, so.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sure. Next up, number six, road use for the 2025 Midstate Massive Trail Race and Possible Votes.
I do not believe-
You're with us?
Rich Schmazzola is with us. He's supposed to join the room tonight.
Maybe table that and see if he comes back?
Yeah.
Heather, this year.
Okay, next one?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll jump to number seven then. Road use for 2025 Blackstone River Valley Greenway Challenge Race and Possible Votes. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, absolutely, my pleasure. So we're in our 24th year of the Greenway Challenge, and this year we are repeating the same course as we had last year. However, there has been one last-minute change to the route to Douglas from Wind Socket. Ironstone Road is closed, which is part of the way we were going. So we're going further into Rhode Island, and we're actually only coming into Douglas on Wallam Lake Road into the forest. So it's a very short amount of road time that we are actually in Douglas. But the Wallam Lake and where we are with the state forests and doing, we come in on street bikes, and then we transition to a trail run, and then we transition from a trail run to a paddle on Wallam Lake, and that's how we finish the race. And everybody loves it at Douglas State Forest. It's a beautiful place to end the race.
That's cool, excellent.
Could be very, you know, last year, the last person finished at 5 o'clock, the last team finished at 5 o'clock at night. So it's a long ride to that spot, but we get there and everybody still enjoys it when they get to the end.
Just curiosity, you said team, do they do it almost like handing off the baton, where one person just does-
Yeah, so we have eight segments. We start at the Whiten Community Center. We go to Rice City Pond in Uxbridge into West Hill Dam and do a mountain bike there. And then we travel down to Rivers Edge Complex in Wind Socket, and they do a run and a paddle and a bike out of there as well. And then we come here. So you can have up to eight people on a team, each one doing one segment. You can have two to four people doing multiple segments, or we have the crazy people that do it all by themselves. I think you have to be crazy to do that, but that's my opinion, so.
It's a lot.
It is a lot, so. But it's a great race, it's a great community race. The Blackstone Valley Heritage Quarter started the race, and then when they decided to no longer do it, we took it over. So we've been doing it, I don't even know, maybe 10 years or some more.
Excellent.
We did receive notification that they would like to have EMTs there at Douglas State Forest. That has been the case in the past, however, that always finds staffing to be able to do that, though. So whichever happens, we'll be ready for it. And if not, they just always tell us that we can call 911, so we will do that. Just really depends on what your availability is for staffing, I believe. But we're prepared to do that. We have implemented, through the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they've asked us to make sure anybody that's on the lake has some form of whistle or safety mechanism, which they could make a loud noise if they signal us if there was, if they were in any trouble. We will have somebody, as we always do, in a boat out on the lake as well.
So just curiosity, the race is set for September 27th?
Mm-hmm.
When's the last day for signups, if I guess if folks are interested?
Monday.
Monday, okay.
This Monday, yeah.
All right, last.
That will help us out a lot. I mean, if people still wanted to do it afterwards, that would be fine as well, but it's just, it makes it more difficult to do all the planning and stuff, so.
Okay, excellent.
You know, it takes a special kind of cruel to make people ride bikes from Manville Road, Carrington Ave, and Grant Grove Street in Wind Socket. That's an evil genius to come up with that.
Yeah.
I mean, how many people even make it past the-
Well, that's the thing, it's very, so it's interestingly enough, in the past, it's always been decided by volunteers what the race looks like. And last year, we invited the race participants to build the race course, and they're the ones that built this course. And it is one of the most difficult courses we have ever had. So they only have themselves to blame.
Well, you may want to see if there's like different, like levels, right?
Well, that's, we did talk about that. It was, it was a challenging year, a lot of projects going on at the community center, so we couldn't really devote the time and energy to that. But we do keep talking about a short race and a long race, so that the people who want to do these crazy, you know, 60-plus miles can do that. But those that maybe want to do a fun one at 30-something, that might be an option as well. So we are looking at that for the future.
All right, so they can avoid the double-black diamond and just take the green trail?
Yes, exactly, right, exactly, exactly.
Perfect, okay.
And we also need volunteers, as everybody does. So if there's anybody that wants to see what this race is like, I actually have a soccer team coming at the finish line. My husband is the varsity coach for Sutton Boys. I know it's not popular in Douglas, but he is, so his team is coming, and we have Blackstone Valley Rotary coming and stuff, but we always need more volunteers.
Oh, cool.
Be able to do this virtually in the future.
Yes, I know, right? Yeah, that would be crazy.
All right, Sutton soccer connections notwithstanding, make a motion to approve as presented the 2025 Blackstone River Greenway Challenge Race as it's been presented to us.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Tim, second by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-nothing, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Do we have number, Matt, do we have number eight ready, or do we want to move on?
This is all about her.
Yeah.
So.
Skip over?
Is she here?
In the meantime-
If we could do 11 and 12, you'd have people sitting here waiting.
Yeah, 100%. All right, we're going to skip around. We'll go to number 11 to form the 2000, sorry, 250th Committee on Possible Votes. Number 11.
We discussed this at our last meeting. I would make a motion to form, officially form the committee, the 250th.
Excellent.
Committee, yes. But it says, I was looking for another word after, I wonder what it had.
Okay.
Second, made a motion.
Yep, motion by Mike, second to Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect, five-nothing. We'll go on to number 12, the appointments to the 250th Committee on Possible Votes.
You're both members of the audience.
Yep, so I guess we can invite Carrie Smith up.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming tonight and expressing interest in volunteering. Town is always looking for volunteers, and can you just give us a little, for the folks at home, just a little about yourself, how long you've been in town, things like that, what you've worked on?
Sure, Carrie Smith, 30-year resident, 28-year-old, 28-year business owner in town, married to Ross Smith. Been probably coming to Douglas and hanging out in Douglas since the mid to early 80s. So I remember the town when, you know, there were still a lot of dirt roads, and I remember, you know, Memorial Day parades and things like that, when, you know, there was a lot of community things going on in town. So spent a fair amount of time in Douglas long before I moved to Douglas.
Excellent.
Alyssa Genatic, I've lived in Douglas for 30 years as well. I was born and raised here, so I just moved back from Thompson, Connecticut, though, about four or five years ago. And I am raising my child here, so I'm actively involved in the school system, and I do a lot of volunteering around town in different committees. So saw this opportunity and was very excited about it.
Good deal.
We'll say Alyssa's been hooking me in the side a good portion of the year, so.
Good deal. Get this up and going, right? Committee formed and everything else, perfect. All right, any other questions?
Just a comment, I heard Carrie say something about Memorial Day, so maybe we could expand on this after they get through the 250th.
Yep, worthwhile.
Yeah. How many members do we have now?
For what?
For this?
Yeah.
Well, if they get appointed, there'll be three.
Yeah.
It's a start.
Because Ross can't get out of it if he wanted to.
Correct, yeah.
Would you add any more after that, or?
Yeah, we can certainly consider, this is to get the ball rolling, like I said last, last meeting, so we need to-
Get formation.
Get formation, get acclimated, and if we feel we need a couple of members more, we'll certainly get that out.
Sometimes with these things here, like the Oktoberfest with a smaller group, you're more decisive and you can move quicker. Using the master plan as an example, it could roll out for some time, so. Small is sometimes good, not in your case.
Also, just to show, before to let people know, very open to public participation, ideas, please come, once we figure out where our meetings are and what time, Ross ideas, let us know.
Excellent.
What you'd like to see.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alyssa Genatic, if I said it correctly, and Carrie Smith to the 250th Committee.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
No escaping now.
So made good on my promise, you get a little seed money.
You got you and we got life, so.
Oh, nice.
Oh, snap, me and Hal are dragging. We're about to take it up at the ice cream connoisseur.
I'm out, go see Gene tomorrow.
That's it, get it rolling from there.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I appreciate you coming. Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Let's go to 10.
Yep, let's go to 9 and 10. Number 9, donation acceptance for the Water and Sewer Department and Possible Votes.
This was missed for acceptance while I was out, so that's why it's on your agenda now.
Okay, okay.
This is for the trailer and the valve exerciser?
No.
Or this for the mini excavator?
Tank.
Sort of tank?
Yeah.
I always liked donations. So the board is familiar because of the size of the buildings we're talking about and the necessity for sprinklers and to flow adequate volume and pressure of water. The designers for both of the warehouses had water storage tanks on premises to supply their systems, sprinkler systems with water. And when the town built out the infrastructure to that part of Douglas and tested the flow and pressure, we significantly exceeded what was necessary at the hydrant and at the loop, at the beginning of the loop, for those two buildings. Therefore, they didn't, they had budgeted for it but did not need water tanks on premises. They connected to the public water supply in Douglas. And in his effort to leverage both donations and, you know, in-kind contributions to our mask works applications, in the development agreements with these two buildings, we have a transfer of funds. If we save you the money on building those tanks, make it available to the town of Douglas to use as a match or as leverage for the North Street Tank Project, which has been postponed but not canceled, and it's important for folks at North Street. We did a lot of work to educate folks on what it was we were trying to do and all of the design efforts that were put into it. All those designs were completed. And the mask works grants have been unsuccessful, it's a very competitive field, but also we didn't exactly have a shovel-ready project for pine sand and gravel, which would complete the need for the bigger tank on North Street. So we've been in a little bit of a holding pattern here. Meanwhile, these companies are closing out these projects, so they cut us the checks in Scannell's case back in January for $337,000. So it's part of the cost. It's, you know, the donate of a tent here is only for that water tank. This water can, this money cannot be used for any other purpose. And if we eventually abandon that project, I assume we would have to return those funds. But for the moment, they are available to us in an account held by the town for the purpose for which they were donated, which is to support a water tank on North Street.
Okay, thanks for that refresher and explanation, perfect.
All right.
Any other questions? Thoughts? All good?
Yeah, I was just reading the letter from January, and it just explains kind of what Matt just said, this is a purpose of road resurfacing, destruction of the water storage tank. Part of the developers' contribution of $673,758 is referenced in the executed development agreement, which is, I might add, is partial.
Yep.
So I'd make a motion that we accept the $337,000 donation to the town of Douglas for the North Street Water Storage Tank and Infrastructure Upgrade Project.
I'll second. All right, motion by Tim, second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-nothing, perfect. All right, number 10, grant acceptance for the Police Department and Possible Votes.
This is an annual formula grant under the 911 system. We've used this grant for this purpose for many years now, which is for dispatch salaries for per DM employees and sometimes overtime. It's a little bit bigger each and every year. It reflects the overall commitment of the state to support the 911 system, so $49,684.
Make a motion to accept the total of $49,684 for the fiscal '26 9/11 Support and Incentive Grant to Cover Dispatch Salaries.
All right, motion by Tim, second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, number 13, just a brief cover of this. I added in the edits, the selectmen procedures and policies and procedures. I added in the edits, my edits and Mike's. I think we're just still waiting on some other edits. I think once we get all those together, we'll just have a couple more readings and go from there, if everybody's good with that. I just took out the, I know we talked about street names, so it sounded like the census was to keep it in, so I kept that in there. And then I just highlighted, if there's any corrections, just reach out to me and I'll put it all in the final edits, if we can get the edits by for our next one.
This is kind of combined with yours and Mike's edits?
Correct, into one.
Yeah, it's labeled, you'll see LS MF next to it. So just for clarity for everybody, so the only thing that I wanted to remove was on page 2, under 4, the board through, the. So eliminate that because the Strong Administrators Act takes care of it. Everything else that's highlighted with my name on it, nothing, that's the all original wording. What that was is just to bring attention to it and reinforce what we actually, I think that we should be paying attention to.
Okay, I'll make a correction on that, Mike, because I think on one of page, I think page 5, I might have, I wasn't sure if I'll remove this, so I'll fix that one there.
And I have to admit, excuse me, I, I didn't tackle this because I wasn't really certain, you know, as we were marking that up. I would much rather prefer a red line document.
Okay.
And it sounds like that's kind of there, but if we can get it in a PDF, we can probably throw a sentence or two in there.
Okay.
I didn't get this.
Okay. Yeah, it's fair enough. I mean, well, any other edits?
Just a quick one here is that on page two, no actions representing the board shall be taken by a member. It should be maybe at a duly authorized meeting rather than calling, because the next sentence allows in case you can't get together to a meeting. But I think the first should be clarified that it isn't a phone call to everybody, but it's at a meeting.
All right. I'll follow the, any edits and stuff like that.
Is that concerning, like, an emergency?
Well, that's the second, that's the next sentence covers the emergency situation in event of emergency.
Yeah. It might need to be separated out.
I think what the intention was is just so somebody's not just running a little rogue, running around, acting as representing the board in an emergency. I would suspect that any of us had an issue like that would reach out to the town administrator or the chairman at that time and have a discussion versus just going out and doing things on your own. And likewise with the chairman, right? And just speak with the administrator or whatever to make sure we have somewhat of a consensus just to protect us as a whole, that's all.
All right. All right. We'll get some more edits in there and another reading. Okay. I think number 14, I think we've got minutes in our packet for July 15th and August 5th and August 19th. Is everybody okay with the July 15th minutes written?
Make a motion to approve the July 15th meeting minutes as written.
All right. Motion by Mike. Second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-nothing.
Everybody else said on the August 5th?
I think the August 5th was a pretty brief meeting. Yep.
Make a motion to approve the August 5th meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mike. Second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, just a note in here on the August 19th. I don't think we captured everything that the guy on the monitor was saying.
It looks, it looks pretty, she did a great job summarizing. And I'm good with the summary.
Maybe Mike wants to be a committee of one and communicate.
With that being said, if everybody's all set with that, I would make a motion to approve the August 19th meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mike. Second by Hal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number 15, Town Administrator's Report. Since we're skipping over six and eight at this point.
I guess. And if we, if we don't have our proponent, which I think is increasingly likely that she won't be here, we'll just skip eight.
Yes.
Because I'm not going to speak to that issue. This was a request. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, so if she wants to speak, she can speak for herself.
Yep.
This has been a phenomenally busy two weeks, and it's hard not to get distracted. But we've had a number of major developments and different issues that have come up, and so we've done our best to maintain balance and get good answers for folks. The first thing that's most important to me is I sent a message late this afternoon clarifying some discussion on Dynamic Douglas, which is not a Facebook page that I monitor. I don't have a social media presence for a specific reason. But one of the recent threads, one of the originators of the thread had begun an effort to have a public event at the Common, which would have started at seven, and in the nature of a vigil for recently assassinated political figure. And basically called it off, saying that she was unaware that the town required a permit for such an event. And I felt that it was significant enough to actually engage Dynamic Douglas for the first time in the eight-plus years I've been working here and clarify to at least the moderators of the page that no permit is required in the town of Douglas to exercise your First Amendment right. If you are going to observe or comment upon or support a family or a cause where this assassination has had an impact, that is basically political speech. And political speech is not something we regulate. Political speech on public grounds is always, always, always allowed. And there is no way that anyone can tell you not to through the permitting process. Municipalities or any government can regulate the time, place, and manner of political assemblies very, very narrowly, and only if the regulations directly tie to an interest of the government in public safety or similar concepts. So, people having a political demonstration cannot block access to a public building. It's okay to ask them to move, not violating their rights, because the rest of the public needs to be able to get into a building. Can't block traffic or engage in activities that might make passage of traffic unsafe. You have to respect town property where you are, and can't run willy-nilly. So, if we, if we said we really don't want open flame in a wooden structure or in a building that doesn't have, that should have sprinklers that doesn't, yada, 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 all of that stuff, those are reasonable regulations. But as to the act itself of gathering and making political commentary, putting up signs, you know, getting up a little vocal about things, that is your closest thing to an absolute right you have in the United States of America, and it's not something that Douglas regulates with a permit. I wanted to make it clear to people that that, nothing came out of town hall to advise that. That was not us. And if you have questions about that, you need to call the town administrator's office, because I rely upon counsel. First Amendment jurisprudence can be very complex. It's constantly changing. There are many, many cases. I probably spent more time in law school studying First Amendment, because it's just something that I'm interested in. So, I feel like I'm well-versed, but I, this is 25 years ago. The law changes, and that's why we rely upon counsel to give us advice. But, so I clarified that on Dynamic Douglas for folks and, you know, stand by it, because Rich Bowen was very comfortable with the talking points, and I forwarded him this morning. So, we were in pretty good shape there. Number two, I made a decision in my role as contract administrator and procurement officer for the town to alter the contract for Seane-Autton and its approach to the overwinter. I want to lean back and see how far that goes. Not far. So, they were going to leave this trench patch and attempt to fill the trench so there would be no lip and call it a semi-permanent trench patch on a very irregular-shaped trench on Depot Street, Martin Road, mostly Depot Street. And the workmanship just hasn't been there, and there's been an awful lot of wear and tear on Depot Street. So, the road that was otherwise fairly level and smooth is really kind of pockmarked. It was my feeling that the compaction in the trench wasn't going to sustain a typical New England winter without deteriorating, and that all those lips and cups and edges would settle again, and we'd really end up with a road that was pretty much impossible to plow. If it was impossible to plow, we might have ice and other runoff and other issues. And we're also frankly very displeased with Seane-Autton. They're far behind schedule. Caught up a little bit this week, but we need to think about things that, A, save money on police details, and B, get them closer to being on schedule. So, Stantec suggested, and I agreed to, we will do a leveling course that is a complete lane-wide. So, wherever the trench is in the middle of one of the lanes of Depot Street, and it does switch, we will pave the entire lane to the center line. Now, that's not a perfect solution. You're going to have that edge where you feather into the center of the street. First of all, it's a double yellow line, so stay on your side of it, and you won't be, implicate that, that edge. But we are going to specifically specify that the contractor, in this case, it's going to be Nocella, so it's not Seane-Autton doing the work. Nocella's doing the paving to rake out all the stones on the edge and then seal the edge with an emulsion. I think this is going to save a lot of wear and tear on our plows. It will make the street more passable for residents over the winter. We are still going to do a complete curb-to-curb mill and overlay at the appropriate time in the spring. But this is going to save us quite a bit of effort with, with details. You know, frankly, one of the reasons why the trench is such a mess is the contract specified a four-foot wide trench, and they used a three-foot bucket. So, every time they hit a stone, they ripped up the side of the trench, and they would have had to saw cut all the way up and down, and it just, it was turning into a cluster. It just isn't worth it, and it works out budget-wise actually to be more or less net-net. But I think it's a better solution for the community. If you're wondering what those alien listening devices are in the front lawn, those green things, those are sample collection sites. And the caveat here is not all regulations make sense. It's not always a perfect storyline, but the way the regulations work, if the main sampling site fails, then you need to sample the pipe in both directions to that point to see where the problem came from, and it can't be more than five service connections away from where the problem was detected. So, in this case, that green sample collection post in the middle, and the other two are the ones that are collecting water from coming from either direction. Now, if you think about it, it doesn't make really much sense that it would come from two directions, but let's not try to make sense with our friends at the state. Let's just do what they say they want us. So, that's what those are, the sampling. We moved that hydrant and made it a, it's a so-called I hydrant. It's right there at the corner of the town's driveway coming in off of Depot Street. So, we've got a lot of extra decorations out there. They're green. Maybe we can do something for Christmas. I'm not sure. But that's what they're there for, just to collect samples. We had a very productive conversation today with our accountant firm, CLA, and our insurance broker, Alliant. We had gotten preliminary figures on what surplus was due back to the town from MSHG Purchasing Group. And I've been very careful, based on their advice, to, to manage expectations on the part of the town. And I still have to have that cautionary statement. They have to have the money to pay us for us to get it. However, it is also true that municipalities cannot escape their debts. They must pay debts, and if you can prove up the debt, then you can force them to pay it. I was of the view that by the time we paid all our runout of claims, that we would have reduced our surplus considerably, and that might make it easier for us to get payment. The downside is it's less money. No matter how we look at the accounting now, the town is, is going to be due somewhere just less than $1 million, which is about two times as much as I've been telling you you're going to get. But at this point, there's very little unknown. So, we're in September. All of our claims from June have pretty much come through in May. So, our so-called runout is almost over. The last bill we got was $5,000 bucks. First bill we got was $119,000. That was the first two weeks of August. So, you can see it's tapering, and we're probably going to have an end right around October, November timeframe. There won't be any more money to be scored as a negative, as something we have to pay. So, the quest will be on now to resolve one last piece of the pharmacy conversation and then go from there. I think this, bringing this up means we can eliminate 17A from executive sessions. That's all I just wanted to bring up to you. I don't think there's any litigation discussion here. Probably not so far.
Million dollars was originally what we were sort of...
It might have been a little bit more than that, but...
Then we came down, and now we're back up again, it seems like.
But part of that's me being really cautious about what I tell you, to make sure you don't think, I don't want to promise you four and give you two and say whoops. Everything I did was worst-case scenario.
Yep.
And now I can't tell you that the worst-case scenario is going to materialize, because we already have enough data in the door to know that it won't. Right? So, we're closer to, you know, 800, 900,000. That's my thought. Exactly what the town does with that, once it materializes, is a broader conversation that the select board will need to have, because there's more than one place to put that. And I've been querying for months now, and I'm, still haven't gotten a particularly good answer. Who is the treasury function for our current program? So, if Alliant's going to provide that to us, I'm not interested in paying for it if they're going to hold the balance. I'd rather hold the balance, follow state law, and who can invest it and what category of securities, and just earn a return on it until we need it to stabilize our rate picture. So, that brings me to the budget. Pardon me, allergies have been brutal. The, I still don't have rose-colored glasses on, but I'm feeling better about where we are with the budget after I've had a chance now to work on it for a couple of weeks. Some of what I think we can do is related to basically just trying to get into a holding pattern pending economic development. So, if things break a certain way at Pine Sand and Gravel, it's really just a question of timing, not a question of whether or not that would generate enough revenue to significantly change the town. It would. So, we had a conversation this week about whether or not to replace a firefighter who's leaving for another community. And it had been the individual's goal to get to a bigger department, which is, and be busier on that specific activity. The individual's not a paramedic, is a, is a fully qualified firefighter. So, this wasn't a surprise or a disappointment. We wish people who've served us very well the best as they grow in their career. But we need to replace it, because one of the things we're doing with the medic-only hiring practices, we're staffing the ambulance on a regular basis, collecting revenues on a solid basis. But a couple of folks who are running on the ambulance are not qualified firefighters. So, when you're staffing the shift, when the deputy chief, yeah, what do we do? Deputy now, right? Deputy chief is staffing every shift. You have to at least have firefighter... You can't be all medics-
Correct.
-on the shift. Somebody's got to run the engine if it's called, and get the ball rolling before the call guys can show up, et cetera. So that's what we're up against. We only have two right now that are only firefighter-qualified, and so if one of those leaves, we need to replace that firefighter with a firefighter. Now, if we can get a medic, we'll be lucky, but we don't have anybody in mind. So in this conversation, I was reluctant to hire a new person when we have a deficit building that we have to address for next year. I think what we're going to do, and Jean and I are working on this, it's entirely possible that the existing special receipts account outlay would be enough to pay for the stretcher and other completion of the ambulance build-out on its own, so that we could look at any further transfer from ambulance restricted receipts to be withheld until next year and become part of the revenue stream. We already scoop 385,000 a year from the ambulance account. We might scoop 470, you know, 460,000 and fund that, one of the ambulance positions from the ambulance restricted receipts account, even if it's just for a year. The year we're in, we're in good shape, because you guys made the property casualty change, so that, that gave us some cushion to finish this year, but that cushion gets absorbed next year from operating details. I'm, I'm saying all this because I'm sharpening my pencil and getting a little bit agitated around unresolved issues. We're, we're not getting good value for taxpayer dollars, so I, I get a little bit edgy when I have to think about whether or not we're going to staff our advanced life support 24/7 ambulance service that's heavily used by Douglas residents, and possibly restrict the growth of that service or keep that service, actually diminish the service provided by the fire department when I've got less-than-efficient spending in, in other areas. And I'll, I'll come to that eventually. With the solution, I'm hoping that I don't have to broach that topic, but staffing levels have to be appropriate for the level of the task. And if we have to right-size the ship and ruffle some feathers to do it in order to continue the services that people put a high value on and are expensive, then those are the things we're going to have to do. Lastly, I think, as I don't want to speak forever, I've made a number of changes today to building security. We had what was basically inappropriate and unqualified access to the building security system. So we're centralizing that control in the Town Administrator's Office between me and Lisa. No other town official will be able to schedule the locks on the doors and make other security changes other than the two of us. Because what had happened is a mistake was made, and the building was unlocked down, and we couldn't get in. And so I went through the log, and we had any number of staff people and others trying to access the building, couldn't get in because somebody inadvertently turned off, or actually turned on the locks. I'm just, that, that's beyond ridiculous. I'm just not going to tolerate it. So it took me like 10 seconds to fix it, because I knew what I was looking at. One of the things that I don't like is that in a typical business day, this door remains unlocked beyond the closure of Town Hall operations. And I think it's done that way because it's an easy sort of convenient way to allow people to come in for evening meetings. But it means that if we leave at 4:30, or most of the staff leaves at 4:30, and the meeting isn't until 7:00, the doors are unsecured on this floor for two and a half hours. Totally unacceptable. Just can't do this. With the level of record-keeping that we have and, and the things that we're doing here, sometimes people are working alone in an office, and this is a special concern, because they don't have visibility to who's at the door, and the door is open, so you're all alone in the building. Sure, we share the space with the police, but they're downstairs.
Yeah.
So you should have the security of knowing if you stay late to work in your office by yourself, you don't, can't see the doors, the doors are locked. So you can get out, but nobody can get in. So what that's going to require is that when a meeting is posted, that posting has to be copied to the Town Administrator's Office so that we can set the locks to open about a half an hour before the meeting starts, and to lock at 9:00, so that if anybody following the town's policy on boards and committees, you're supposed to be done by 9:00. But after 9:00, you're not open to the public anymore, and, you know, we'll have to prop the door open until your meeting ends. That's going to be the only solution for it. But it sounds draconian, but reality is, we're catching up with what we have to do. The last note I have for you is, I forwarded to all of you legal opinions offered by Land Council for very thorough, clear, definitive direction, based on research and knowledge of different codes and citation of different authorities, provided to us six hours after we asked for it, on the interaction between the petitioner's right-to-farm bylaw proposal and the town's zoning code and other state statutes and, and regulations. So I urge you to review that, because I think it's a, first of all, it's an example of the quality of work we're getting, and I'm thanking you for making the appointment that you made. And secondly, this is an issue that gets talked a lot about in town. There are definitely questions that have clear answers. So I did the best I could to anticipate what people would ask and have counsel answer those questions. So we'll be getting back to the different groups that I've met with and share those opinions with them, because the whole idea of town meeting is that a community governs itself through a democratic process, and the meeting will be best if everybody has the information they need to make the decisions about the things that are in front of them. And we provide it in a neutral fashion. This is how parliamentary procedure works. This is how town meeting works. This is the moderator's role. This is the town council's role. And our role here is that whatever town meeting decides, we have to implement it and give it force, because it's not just a piece of paper that gets somebody's to stamp on it. One of the things I, I got to tell you I don't want to go along with is any strategy that embarrasses the town. So if we know something probably won't pass muster with the Attorney General, we just got to flag that and tell all the interested parties. If they want to vote it any way, they can vote it. But they have been told by people who start as their job as public servants to get them the answer to their question, this may not pass muster with the Attorney General if it passes in its current form. So you can think through your strategies, think through your, your goals, but we're not going to just let it pass so that it can get killed by a state official. I, I think that's kind of an abuse of the whole process of town meeting, and I don't want to go along with that. I'm glad people make good decisions. So that's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman. I, I've covered a lot, I'm sure it was a question or two.
So what I'm hearing, I just briefly read that. That was sent probably when I was on route here. Are we going to relay this, like, in the immediate to the petitioners, or who?
I think we're going to have an internal discussion with staff, so that we make sure everybody understands it, and then the petitioners, and anybody who's come in to speak to me, I'll explain it to them.
Okay.
I don't want to get into the substance here, because it's not posted for discretion.
Yep, yeah. Any other questions or anything? We're all good? All right, number 16, any topics not recently anticipated 40 hours, 48 hours in advance to the meeting?
Actually, I have-
Any roundtable?
I have something that I'd like to, like to mention, so same subject, the, this petition that's going to be going around, it's a lot of emotions running with it. I would just ask that people that are involved in it, positive or negative, be respectful of everybody, that's whether they're, they're neighbors or on boards or whatever. Last week, somebody posted a, and put a post on, on the Dynamic Douglas, I think it was a Dynamic Douglas, but one of the Facebook pages, that elected positions have repercussions, and then went on to copy and paste everybody's name and term for the planning board. The intention and the interpretation can sometimes be two different things. I received a few different calls, one of them being from a planning board member expressing this, and I, and I did tell that member that I would mention it. I, I would just ask that everybody respect each other. The, as far as the planning board goes, there, there is one particular member that I'm sensitive to, and I'm sure everybody else sitting at the table is as well, to have his name put up there as an innocent participant is inappropriate. So that's all I want to say with that. I'm not, I'm not going to beat it up. I don't live in fear. I don't care if somebody wants a seat, two years.
I'd probably further add that, I mean, again, all our boards are made up of volunteers, and there's a lot of volunteers in, in the community, a lot of expertise, you know what I mean, and not, you know, folks that are stepping forward, offer their expertise and guidance, and, you know, it's, it's irreplaceable. It adds a big added value when someone, on multiple, you know, on, on planning boards, ZBA board, Board of Health and stuff like that, brings expertise. It's really a positive asset to the, to the town, so, so thank you for bringing this up, and I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, their process really has no impact on, on this entire thing.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think, many people voting on subjects that, that they don't take into account as supporting or not supporting by a board or a committee. I think they're making their own judgments based on how they feel, so.
All right.
With that, I'm going to let it go, and that's all I wanted to mention.
So I just got one other roundtable item. Just wanted to shout out to the Highway Department for doing a great job with the patching that they did on Main Street over by the VFW Hall. That worked out great. It, it looks, I've driven over it multiple times. I don't know, Ross, you've gone that way maybe, or Mike, but it's a smooth-
Well, I am actually a little disappointed that it was corrected, because it was quite entertaining to watch people catch air going over the bump.
You know, the Douglas speed bump's gone away.
No, when they pressed that, the dirt, people literally came off the ground. It was, it was pretty funny.
Yeah, but, no, no, the-
The speed bump.
Yeah. No, no, great, great job by the Highway Department, really just, I appreciate it, you know, their involvement and stuff like that, so.
Another Highway Department, they made an improvement at Pine and South, where you turn, and they put really nice barrier for people were going through the grass area. It may need a few more reflectors, but it looked pretty solid, and that was the problem, people were taking shortcuts over that grass area.
Yeah, and there's drainage under it.
Yeah.
So it wasn't really a good thing, and a little shout-out to Capital Canopus, because that was a guardrail that they had ordered for their site that they installed, and they donated it to the town, and that's-
Oh, excellent. Yeah, that's definitely a positive-
Very professional the way it was put in. Could stop a Tiger Tank going through there.
Number six, we have time to review that on our first meeting in October, considering that it's the 11th and 12th is their race, that gives them ample time.
I'll reach over to him.
Okay. That's fine, a week ahead of time. They don't need any more notice.
Save their paper.
Yes, please save the race package.
Yep, okay, excellent.
Disregard my scribbles.
Thanks for knowing what's yours.
All right, Ross, I think you're, you're up for number 17.
All right, I'll make a motion to move to executive session for interest in real property, Chapter 61, and then we will reconvene to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All right, motion by Ross, second by Tim, a roll call vote.
Smith, aye.
Deuce, aye.
Stephen's aye.
Vote aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.